I'll call the Wednesday, March twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five meeting in Essex Junction City Council to order. Are there any agenda additions or changes?
Not for me.
For me, it doesn't look like it. It sounds like it from the room, so we'll move on to public to be heard. This is the portion of the meeting where folks can bring questions, comments, or concerns to the council. These can be topics that are on the agenda for this evening or not. So I don't see any hands online. There's few participants. I can't see the room. Is there anyone in the room?
Joe Duncan is here with us in the room from Champlain Water District. Nobody else.
Nobody else. All right. So we will move on to, I think you said there's nobody in the room. So we'll move on to five A Champlain Water District Annual Presentation.
Okay. Can you see us yet?
Nope.
Raj?
Do not. See a whole lot of me. There you are.
Oh, all right.
Here's the gang.
Okay.
Gang's all there.
Joe Duncan, Champlain Water District. Thanks for coming and go for it.
Sure. Thanks for, thanks for having me. It's always good to get out and be able to let you know a little bit about what we're doing, who we are, how we do it, but also answer any questions or hear any thoughts that you might have when it comes to the water that you are receiving. So Champlain Water District, I'm Joe Duncan. I am the General Manager at Champlain Water District. We are a wholesale water provider. So essentially what that means is that we produce the water, draw it out of Shelburne Bay, treat it at our plant on Queen City Park Road in South Burlington. We pump it out of the plant and we pump it out to nine different member municipalities, from Shelburne to the south, to the Village of Jericho, to the east and to Milton, to the north, and most of the areas in between, the exception being the city of Burlington, they have their own water facility. So they provide water to them through, if you've ever been down to the Coast Guard Station, there's a, there's a water plant down there by the Coast Guard Station Moran Plant, and that's where they produce their water. We do have some interconnects with them, so we do try and service each other in emergencies when needed. And then there's also the anomaly of the town of Colchester, which actually doesn't have its own municipal system. The town owns, and there's actually a bunch of small systems there that Champlain Water District owns two of the three. And the third one is actually Colchester Fire, too, and they get their water from the city of Burlington, which is a Malice Bay area. So we started in nineteen-seventy-one as an entity, went online in seventy-three, so we've been producing the water since then. Most of the water that, that comes out to the junction comes, actually, all of the water in the junction pretty much comes out from our plant. There's different pumping stations around the, around the area, because if you can imagine, we start out in South Burlington at a, at a lower elevation closer to the lake, and then as we move out, especially towards Jericho, we get up into the hills, about nine hundred feet, so we're pumping out of the lake at, at just about a little bit above sea level and all the way up to about nine hundred feet out in Jericho. And so the city of Essex Junction is, is actually our largest customer by volume, and that is primarily because of the Global Foundries Facility. They use around three million gallons a day. And that is the, that would be the largest entity within our system. Essex Junction uses about point-six to point-seven million gallons a day. So, so that, that brings it to almost about four million gallons a day roughly is Essex Junction compared to our next largest user, which is the city of South Burlington, which is almost two million gallons a day. And so we provide water pumps out of our plant, comes to here, and then the, the city has its own staff, its own distribution piping. And that brings the water from our transmission mains into the businesses and homes of the users in the city. Ricky and his team take care of getting the water to them, including, you know, metering, billing, everything else. And, but we also provide support services. If there's ever any issues, our goal is to work very closely with our member municipalities to make sure they get what they need. You know, so we work together even sometimes if it's not even our infrastructure, just to provide any support services, because our view is we're all in it together. So, so some other stuff about us is that we, we were in eight member municipalities for us with the Village of Essex Junction, as you may or may not recall. The Village of Essex Junction was an entity within the town, because the village had the ability to vote on town issues. When we were formed, the, the village was part of the Town of Essex as a member municipality. And we had one member from within the town, including the village borders, who was a commissioner on the board. We have one commissioner from each of our member municipalities. And when the city and, when the city became a city in lieu of a village, and that change occurred, we added a ninth member to our, to our board. That was when the, when the split occurred or the official city designation occurred. We, we had Aaron Martin, who is a resident of the city, previously the village. As the Town of Essex rep, the, the city and the town had agreed that we would wait until this cycle here for, for the election to occur, at which point Aaron would represent both the town and the city. We had the election for the town recently, as we hear a little earlier, Jeff Kirchner is now the Town of Essex Representative for Champlain Water District. And Aaron is still representing the, the city. His term is up at the, in April. There is the election coming up on the eighth, if I remember correctly. And at that point, a representative will be formally elected from the city. As I understand it, Aaron is the only one on the ballot at the moment. You never know what happens with the write-ins these days. And so, so we'll find out who, who your representative will be as of, as of April eighth. And, and I think that's, it's kind of nice. It definitely gives, I think, interestingly enough, from what I can tell, looking back historically, I could not find any information that indicated that a, a town resident was ever elected during the CWD tenure of the town and the village voting jointly. They've primarily always come out of the village. So, so it'd be interesting to see what that looks like with a town and a city representative. So that's how we're set up. If anybody's ever interested, we meet on Thursday, third Tuesday of the month at noon at Champlain Water District. It's in person, but we also have Zoom attendance if anybody ever wants to do that. Our, we have our annual meeting every year. It's the first Tuesday of, of April. So ours is coming up on April first. It is not a fool's day event. It actually will happen, so you're welcome to attend. We hold that at our, at our facility at four oh-three Queen City Park Road. For those who want to attend, we, we work each year with our budget, our, our board has, back in the, back in the seventies and eighties, we pretty much kind of kept our rates very flat, even kind of into the nineties. And I think what had happened was is IBM at the time was in such a big growth mode that you could keep it flat because the water sales were ever increasing. And I think there, there's a chart in there that you saw that had some of the historical usage in there. And, and then in the late nineties, we were still holding it flat. And then IBM took a different, you know, a different usage pattern, major decrease. And that caused us to realize that we didn't live in a world where every year we sold more water, that we had to kind of adjust to the, the reality of two things. One, interestingly enough, the, you know, the downturn in IBM, in IBM's usage now Global Foundries, but also interestingly, the, the, we've been selling water and tracking water sales for many, many, many years. And so Global Foundries has been something in the, in the range of almost, you know, five million at one point in time when they were IBM to, to about three, three and a half million now. And interestingly enough, we have always stayed flat at almost selling just about six million gallons a day of non-IBM Global Foundries usage, and that dates back to like nineteen-eighty-nine. And so one of the challenges that does come with running a water system is trying to encourage conservation so that we don't, we have a very big lake. We have, we draw out of Shelburne Bay, which is Lake Champlain. It looks like an unlimited resource, but I'm sure if you go out to the, to the west coast and you talk to some of the places out there and look at some of the, the lakes along the southwest region, you'll realize that that's not necessarily the case, that water isn't always going to be there. But, and Vermonters are very water conservation minded. And so even when you look at the growth in Chittenden County, which we sell water to Williston, South Burlington, Essex Junction, Essex Town, Milton, Shelburne, and Wenuski, and you look at the growth that has gone on in all of these communities, and if you take the Global Foundries IBM usage out of the picture, we have been sitting at six million gallons a day for almost thirty years. It's, and I, I attribute that to the fact that you have a mindset of people conserving. I think you also have some business comes and goes in, in that piece as well, and just, you know, energy efficiency, new buildings, all that stuff that comes with water conservation. And so the model is very interesting from a, and I'm sure you set rates in Essex Junction. The model is very interesting because you have a flat line resource of water usage. Your hope is that it goes up, but if it doesn't go up, you, you have inflation, you have insurance, you have all the things that come with it. And one of our models is, is we are very lucky that we were born in the, we were started in the seventies. And as a person born in nineteen-seventy-two, that's very young, extremely young. And especially, especially in the water arena where from Essex Junction, you know, there's some hundred-year-old main floating around here. And so we have, we have the, we are lucky to have the, the history that all of our served systems have of old pipe and having new pipe and being sort of, having some forethought of, we don't want to be, and not that, not that people did things wrong, not that Essex Junction or anybody else did anything wrong, but over time, buried infrastructure is forgotten. And when it's forgotten, it doesn't get tended to, and when it doesn't get tended to, it eventually gets old and potentially has breaks. And the older it gets, the more breaks you have and leaks you have. So our goal is to not be in that position, to be as, be as proactive as we can. So we keep a very active financial model of, and capital improvements plan together so that we are always reinvesting in our, in our infrastructure. And as a matter of fact, if we do ever have, when we have a surplus in our water sales, we're required to take that surplus and put it into our capital improvements plan, so that we're reinvesting to avoid any of those future pieces. And our goal is to have a three to five percent increase each year in water rates that allows us to, to reinvest in our infrastructure, as well as kind of keep up with, keep up with where the, the market is going for salaries and insurances and everything else. And part of that, our belief is, is that doing that keeps that rate shock from happening, because in the, in the nineties, when IBM took a downturn, we were doing ten, twenty, you know, fifteen, twelve, you know, rate shocks every year trying to play catch-up on stuff. So it, we recognize that water is, is something that everybody needs, and our goal is not to, to run them, run the world like in the mindset of a monopoly, but to also look at it and say, if we're not prudent with what we do in our investments, we're doing a disservice in the long term to the, to the customers of Champlain Water District. And so you'll see stuff like we did a couple of years ago. We put in a new pump station and, out in Essex by, off of Route fifteen, just on the town border, and that was to try and create some redundancy in pumping water from Essex Junction to Essex Town. Having one pump station is, we like things in pairs, so that if you ever lose one, you've got another over there. So resiliency, redundancy is a big thing for us as well. And it's very interesting to watch the climate and kind of see where the climate is going, what's happening with our water sources, and what's happening with washouts and, and waterways and river crossings and everything else. So we try and be very proactive in keeping up on that sort of stuff so that we're not caught short in the end. But, you know, that's, that's who we are, that's what we do. I invite anybody who would ever like to have a tour of our water treatment facility anytime. Happy to do it as a group, happy to do it as individuals. And anybody out who might be watching, happy to have people come check out our facility. I think what you'll find is it looks like this little, small little building at the top, but we go about thirty feet down and you, you walk around down there, you kind of get lost and, and looking at all the things. And, and our staff are very proud of what they do. They, they enjoy having people come in and, and explain the, the stuff that they do, because it's, it's a little bit of witchcraft and magic back there with some chemicals and some other things. It's kind of fun. So happy to answer any questions that anybody has, and if there's a topic that you want to hear more on, I'm happy to speak to it.
Raj?
Thank you very much. I don't have any questions. I read through the, through the budget presentation you had, and I appreciate that. And your history was really interesting. I haven't quite gotten that much of it in the past, so thanks for that. Any questions from council?
I did have a question, not just to acknowledge, I want to say, along the same lines of what Raj just said. Thank you for that background, because the one thing that I did want to ask you about was the sales scene, that the trends over these years have been, especially these last four, that downward trend. So I appreciate that background, because it really helped out a lot for me to understand what's happening and why. So, but I will ask this question in regard to looking at, again, your budget summary that you had included in there as well. I'm curious, as, you know, again, one municipality to another, the insurance problem is a problem for everybody, you know, but it is the largest increase in your budget and totally understandable. Just wondering if, if there's anything that your board has done or looked at or considered in regards to trying to help and, you know, because again, we want to provide great benefits to staff, generally speaking, and I'm sure you're in the same boat, so therefore I'm just kind of curious what you guys might have done around trying to control some of these things.
Yeah, we, we have tried to control some of that. Some of that is tied to what we have. We, we do have a bargaining unit for our, for a portion of our staff. And so there are certain plans that we are committed to within that, and some, and they tend to be some of the better plans, because that's what's negotiated and also kind of, it's one of those things that we think is a, is an employee benefit as well. But try to, trying to competitively search the market for insurance is very limiting, both on health insurance, and actually this year, our board has said, when we're renewing our, our non-health insurance, our, our building insurance, all that stuff, we're actually competitively bidding that right now to try and get that possibly in a little bit more of a control place than we have because of exactly what you're noting. So we are trying to understand if we can do a little better.
Thanks. I appreciate that.
The other interesting thing, too, is unfortunately, we're adding insurances to stuff. We've added cybersecurity insurance recently, too, which is, you know, it, it started out pretty cheap, but then I think they realized the, the cost implications of, of cybersecurity incidents. And so that has gone up very much, and we're actually looking to try and understand if there's a way to, to, to better cover ourselves versus where we're at with it right now. So that's also an interesting adder to the insurance realm for us.
Anyone else?
No one else on this side.
Well, great. I really appreciate you coming tonight. Regina, do you have anything you wanted to add or ask for this?
I don't. Just really appreciate the partnership.
Yeah, we do, too. So we are here to, we're here to help. I, I, I know that Ricky and Regina know that, but know that, too, that whatever support we can ever offer in the water realm, we're, we're happy to do it.
Thank you.
Thanks again for all the tasty water.
Thanks, yeah. Have a great evening.
Enjoy the rest of the meeting.
Thank you.
All right, move on to five B conversation with Wendy Hisco, Brownell Library, our library director.
Hello.
All right, thank you for joining us.
Yes, everybody looks so small in this.
I know, this, the view, the view that we have, guys, is like the wide shot of the whole table, so you're all like really small.
Yeah. But I'm pretty sure I see who everybody is there. So thanks for having me, and I can see Raj and Amber much better. And Jean, thanks for joining us and being, giving a chair update. So I, I framed some of our highlights and challenges. I think it's just been an interesting year, having Lincoln Hall under construction has added some stresses to our building that we hadn't anticipated, but we're working through it and we're juggling as much as we can to accommodate meeting spaces. And parking has been a real issue with the contractors filling up the lot. So we've worked with, like, we have the AARP tax help preparers, so they are trying to carpool now, so they don't fill up the lot with their six cars. And, and staff is just doing an amazing job, just kind of holding it all together. We've had, everybody's been sick a lot this year. So we've been regularly trying to plug in holes. I've been covering the desk more than I would have anticipated, but just trying to keep the library open, and it's been like, I mean, we have such wonderful visitors, but then also sometimes challenges, but I'm grateful that we have the outreach workers to tap into, and we've had to call emergency services more regularly. And we're a little bit nervous about what's going to be happening with things happening at the government, federal government level, and what kind of cuts we may be seeing. There's, I think, a recent executive orders looking to close down or reduce the funds considerably for the Institute of Museum and Library Services, and that, that money goes to all fifty state library agencies and is critical for interlibrary loan services within our state. We get grants from the Department of Libraries to help sustain the service. And then we also wouldn't have, possibly have limitations on what we could get from out of state if other libraries around the country have to reduce services. So there's certainly some, a lot of unease of all of the changes. And we're kind of prepared for, like, we've talked through if we have any. I attended a webinar a while back about, like, if the impacts of, if there's any sort of ICE actions in the state, and we don't have that many field agents in the state, so it looks like we shouldn't worry too much about that, but it's kind of wild to see how much is going on at the, in New England with crackdowns. And so we hope that that's going to stay away from Vermont, but we do have sanctuary cities here, so it's hard to say. So I don't know if there's any particular questions or where it looks like the roof replacement is on your consent agenda. So that's finally seeing forward movement, and it's been great to work with John to get that going forward. And it's a far less of a cost than we're anticipating because of the damage last year. I think it was a winter storm that ripped off some of the roof that was planning to be replaced. And so we're working through some of our buildings issues. We had some backups recently, so we'll have some costs and related to that. I think we're going to have to have potentially some jackhammering in the mid-level to have a valve removed that's causing some of the, the backups with debris catching on it. And we may need to close for that, because jackhammering and public service doesn't really go hand in hand. But, I, yeah, I'm trying to think of, but we, I, things are going forward, I think. Like, we've been really busy. We've seen people, more recently, a few more people in crisis than we might see normally in the winter. We saw a big uptick in the summer and then the fall with the motel programs closing. But we haven't really seen too much action until more recently with needing to call outreach. And there was one situation where outreach wasn't available to respond quickly, so we had to call the police because of a person that was going into a significant crisis, so. But yeah, things are going. We're sharing resources, and that's wonderful. And most of the, most of everything else, the building's holding together and the computer systems are holding together, and we just keep rolling along.
Can you talk up a little bit about what some of the policies you've mentioned in the look ahead? There are some policies you're looking to adopt based on some of the sustainable library initiatives and?
Yeah, sustainable library initiatives, the policies, and I think Jean's going to mention some of this when, because she had some notes to share with you. But one thing that we're looking at is looking at a sort of a recruitment for diverse board members and how that might, how that could, the trustees, the library trustees could potentially go forward with that. And I think trying to adopt just more sort of sustainable purchasing policies. We're trying to reduce our, I think everything's really trying to reduce the footprint as much as possible, which we do already. We share resources. So we do a lot of that, but just looking at if there's anything, there's minor things, like we've been looking at, like there, the Rotary Help Fund up Pollinator Garden around our main sign last year, so making sure that we're in line with any sign policies in the city, and also agreement on what to put there, so that's, I wouldn't say it's a policy. I think anything that's sort of, I, I think just looking at how to share resources, preserve resources, stretch the resources as much as possible while reducing the footprint and also promoting diversity amongst what we're doing as this, for staffing, for collections, just, and just kind of funding, really being, I think we have a collection development policy, but just also looking at the, how do you, a closer look on how we could do that and think about sustainability as far as resources, the building, like if there's things that we could do, like, and I think a lot of it is harder where we don't have really a, a lot. Like, we have a lawn, but it's pretty small. But some of the things that they've recommended is like, like putting a solar array, so you have shaded parking, so people might not have to have their cars as hot and that sort of thing. But we do, but we, we do align with a lot of things in this certification, just because we have public transportation, and we've worked hard at trying to, like, we put in LED lights, and we continue to. I think we're at the point we've replaced everything in the building and are just replacing LED bulbs, but just looking, like, I think we've considered, like, do we want to offer double-sided printing? But what would that mean and how many, like, and I think a lot of people are looking for single-sided printing in the public because they need to make copies and that sort of thing. So just looking at every little facet of what we do, and if it's, there's a way to make it more sustainable. And the Sustainable Libraries certification process has a really great module that you can look through and see the suggestions. There are sample policies that we can adapt. And we have, one of our new trustees, Alex Carmichael, is really like a very great writer and very, like, I think he's like, has a philosophy background. So really just an intelligent person to kind of look at the big picture and how it could fit into libraries, as a longtime library user, and really somebody who cares a lot about Brownell Library as a resource.
That's great. Thanks for that. Anybody in the council have any questions for Wendy or comments?
I'll defer to you first. No, no, go ahead. Wendy, I wanted you just to touch on, on the sentence that you reviewed the current safety protocols with Essex Police and now have a date for training, including getting staff familiar with firearms in the event that there's an abandoned or unsupervised bag in the building. I'm curious what that specifically looks like for your staff, because I might.
But what we're looking at is, we, we don't know what people bring into the library, and there's no, the state statutes indicate that municipalities can't regulate if people possess firearms, unless it's a school or court, court, I think, and I'm not sure if there's any other things. So we are just, most of our staff have not had any, like, have never interacted with firearms in any stretch whatsoever. So I'm talking to one of the officers about, he's going to bring in training guns just so people have an opportunity to just see what they are in the event that one got loose in the library or we, like, a bag is left behind, like, how do you safely handle that bag until we call the police? So not really looking at how to handle the firearms, just more increasing people's comfort level if, if we do have a situation and what the police are telling us to do. And what we would do is just maybe throw a coat over it and have somebody wait there. But for me, I just don't think, like, if you've never interacted with firearms, even standing next to a gun might be terrifying for somebody. So just having any sort of familiarity before we may have some sort of encounter like that, because there have been situations, I mean, thinking Williston years ago, somebody left a bag. I mean, I think in Williston years ago, somebody left a backpack behind that had a gun in it. And because they're on school property, it turned into a pretty significant police response because of um the, that was not allowed on their campus. So um, but it does happen and it's just more to try to um get staff familiar. And then we're also gonna just talk about what to do if there's abandoned property, because we do, like, what do you have, should we be searching bags? Because I think the police right now are pretty busy. And previously they would just say, just have us come pick it up. But now they're saying, can you please look inside? Um, but how much do you dig in? And if there's drugs in it, how do we stay safe? Um, or that sort of thing. And we've had recently, I think in the fall, we had a bag that was abandoned outside the library and somebody left it there for a few days. So I ended up just looking inside and it had pills and small baggies. And so I just closed it right back up and called the police and handed it to the officer who responded and he just took it away. So um, we just never know what's gonna be around.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the clarification around that. Thank you. Um, did you, okay. Uh, Wendy, I would like to ask on, on a couple of points. Um, first off, again, you know, since being on the council, this is my second year. So we've now had this second conversation where we've, where we've talked about um, you know, the need for human services or the feeling of needing human services within the library in order to help a number of people who come into the library distressed or i- in various states, right? Um, and I'm curious, and maybe this is a better question for the trustees, but I'm kind of curious whether um, you know, this has been going on for a couple of years now, it's been at least that I've heard directly. So I'm kind of curious, like, do we have any thoughts, ideas, plans? Do we, or, or, sorry, let me back that up. Do the trustees, do the, does, do you have any ideas, thoughts or plans around how we can better serve the public in order to, again, assist these individuals? We spoke last year um after uh watching, having watched that present, a presentation from Howard Center um and what the effort that they were doing in a test program at the South Burlington Library. So I'm just curious what, what your thoughts or what the trustees' plans are around this.
Um, I've talked to the library director at South Burlington and um, I think one of the ch- challenges and benefits of having an intern is you do have somebody and it looks, it sounds to me like they have somebody at a table. And it really depends on the skill level of that intern, how much they can offer. And they are, they're under supervision from this, their university. Um, but there's always training and any, any new person, like we have an intern right now from Saint Mike's who's um doing an internship in equity. And so giving her increased responsibility over the course of the semester. But it does take staff time to be able to uh orient somebody. Um, so it's sort of can, it really depends on the individual. And I know that South Burlington has noted like the, like they had a really dynamic person. And so that was that you don't know how outgoing somebody is going to be. Um, and interns take work. And right now, I still would say we're really maxed out and um I, like outreach has been great when we need them. But I would say hesitant about bringing interns in because they don't stick around. You have them for a semester and then you'd have to retrain somebody new. And we're constantly retraining staff because they come and go, or at least our part-time staff and sometimes full-time staff that have moved into this area and can't afford to live here. So we've lost a couple of staff because they can't afford to live in Vermont and the wages that we pay. Um, so it's, it's rough. Um, and I, I'm interested to see long-term how things go with South Burlington with that program. Uh, I've been in regular meetings with the director of the South Burlington Library and the director of the Burlington Library. And Burlington, the city, has just hired a social worker, a full-time social worker that's based for, it's a social worker for the whole city that's based in the library. And so, and now they're also hiring their own personal security instead of contracting out. So the landscape continues to shift, we train a lot. Um, and I would say in an internship position, from what we're experiencing, you're not like, they're not allowed to offer any counseling. So they're just tapped, they might point people to resources just like our outreach workers would. So I don't know if it would be a, a real win to have that extra supervision needed on site for an intern. Because even though you have faculty oversight for an internship, there's still a lot of work and a lot of going back and forth to agree on a project. So it's been a pretty steep climb to have our intern and we're actually, but we're excited to have her. She's really a bright person. Um, one of her specialties is accessibility, so she's looking at what we have. And so we'll be able to make the library more accessible for anybody with any sort of disability. And so she's compiling a list of the resources, so we'll be linking that to our website hopefully by the time, end of her um internship time. But it has taken a lot to get this internship off the ground. And I can't say I'd be really excited to be doing that semester after semester at this point, when we do have the outreach, outreach workers um to do pretty much the same work. Um, but they have, they're a lot more experienced um and would know the resources right away without having to be instructed and need to be guided as much as an intern would be.
Appreciate that, that feedback and that insight. I, um, I, the challenge that I see as I continue to see this um come up is again, recognizing exactly what you said. If, if your staff is that capacity, this is part of that capacity right now, you know? Um, if there's a way to relieve that capacity so that you can take on other things. I mean, it's a, it's a bit of changing, moving the res- trying to shift their responsibility. Again, I'm not saying that an intern I think is ideal. I'm just, I'm just saying, I, I think, having seen this now for a second year in a row, I kind of feel like, if nothing else, for conversation in a public manner, we should, again, I'm saying we as, as a city, not because we as a council, but you know, um, there should be a discussion about it. And hopefully the trustees will, will take that account as part of, again, looking at the operations of the library. Because I think, um, again, if this is a regular part of the routine of being a librarian or being in the library, then this is something that we need to address because it is taking up capacity time, uh, or taking up capacity of staff.
Yeah, it, it's something that um any library and any population center across the country is dealing with. There's, we are not exceptional in that frame of, of um reference that all um libraries are open to everybody. And we're really at the frontline of where people are, when there's not services. I'm continually amazed with how many people will just come to the library asking for direction for anything. Um, and it's uh, it, it's just, is what it is. We, as services, I, the, we had institutions that weren't great, that were closed in the eighties. And I think it's just sort of an evolving thing with drug addiction, like life isn't really getting easier for people. And now with the housing crisis, there's a lot that needs to be done. And I would say, please work with the state and federal government to advocate for better funding for housing, um, social services. It's um, you know, libraries, people don't go, didn't go into our career path for being at this sort of frontline of people in crisis, but that's what, exactly what libraries are now. Um, and it gets worse if, if you look at any sort of national information about libraries. It's, it's not great, um, it's rough, but we also just, that's just part of our business. And we serve everybody, including marginalized populations. So it's just, it is what it is. And yes, it is an important conversation, I think, to keep at the forefront because um we, we've done a ton of training. And I think I'm grateful to have the support that we do have, the training that we have had and continue to have um just through subscription services and um working with local organizations to help um strengthen our staff. And I wouldn't say a ton of staff time is taken by managing because we can call, we can say, hey, do you want to see an outreach worker? And we, um, people will say yes or no, and depending on what they're feeling. Um, I would say an outreach worker is better than saying, hey, do you want me to just call the police for you? And that is something that most people who are in crisis, if they've had interactions with people in uniform, aren't gonna be excited about. So um, it's, it's just talking to people and that's what we do, we connect with people. So it's just, I feel like it's part of our business and it's rough to see people in crisis. Um, I would say in the fall, I never expected to see so many people. When you look and see somebody that's looking lost and you say, is there anything I can do? And they just look at you and um, like, do you need help? And they start crying and that's happened more times than I can count. And so I'm really grateful that our police department is working with Howard Center to offer people um through the outreach team to come. And I, I just see the outreach workers spending hours with these people. So it's an amazing service and I really hope that that continues because I can't be more grateful for the support that they've had when we see people um going through rough times. And if people are willing to access that, those are the people that are really gonna direct them. And they are so committed, it's incredible how much they work, they do. And they won't, they won't stop to find people housing or um if, just meet them where they're at and help them, so.
I agree with you on the advocacy front, we have to keep that, um, we have to keep that, that conversation going. But I, I, again, as I would, um, you know, in reading this commentary along with the commentary from last year, again, continue to see safety concerns here that I would also say make me uneasy because um, you know, again, I don't want anyone on our staff to be in an unsafe situation. And I know that there's no simple answer to this, but um, you know, however we can create a, an environment that will ease that in, in some way to make staff feel safer. Um, if, because if, if that situation is going on compounded by, as you acknowledge in your writing as well, um, you know, the low morale that is happening on your staff. Um, that is a compounded stress that I can't imagine any staffer having to deal with on a day-to-day basis. That being said, I did want to ask you about um what you may be doing directly in order to help out with the morale that is going on in the library.
I think everybody supports each other as much as we can, and I think trying to stay positive. Um, I think we try to celebrate our wins and you can feel good about helping people and you feel good about seeing the resources that people are sharing. And, and also like if there's somebody in crisis and it's, you just go up, I, and we have trained in de-escalation. So you go up to them, introduce yourself. And even making that personal connection can be rewarding in its own way, knowing you're helping them and you can get them help. So it's not all like, it's not all scary and terrible. It's, it's just helping people and that's really what we're in, that's what's drawn people, some people into our, I would say a lot of people may think that librarians are in it for reading, but it's really for resource sharing. And part of the resources are connecting people to the resources in our community. Um, and I, there's very few times, I think there are certain people that are like, and I wouldn't say that they're even the unhoused population. It's other people that are more scary and more entitled and will get in your face. Um, and so really being trained in de-escalation, I think, has helped a ton. Um, because then you can try to, how do they call it, like sort of pennies in a cup, where you're just trying to create good rapport with somebody. And these are people that are in our community or in the surrounding communities that come and use computers or hang out or like, it, it's. So we're always constantly drawing lines of where, what, what services do a library, does a library provide? Um, and trying to get staff to be more of a universal front on that. But I would say that when you, you feel like you're helping people, that is rewarding in its own way. And it's really, I think, the struggles from staff or when they can't pay bills is really where the poor morale is coming from. And it, yeah, and having, like, we've had some assaults in the library and that doesn't feel great. But if you know that we can walk away from it and people are shaken up, but that they did the best that they could and that can feel good as well, that nobody got hurt. Um, and thankfully that doesn't happen very often, but it has happened. But all of the training that we've done has like you, I mean, even with a police department so close by, being able to try to just de-escalate and get things, separate people and have emergency people coming helps a lot. So it's there, I would say that we may be odd for really loving working with all of the populations that we do, but we really, like, we serve everybody. And it's that, like, I would say the human part, if we can help people, really does feel good. So um, we don't, we celebrate those wins.
Thanks, Wendy. Anyone else in the council?
No.
No? Okay, I can't see anybody, so. All right, Wendy, thanks very much, appreciate it. Um, we'll sort of, don't go anywhere, we'll transition right into Jean's.
I just mute myself here.
And Jean Grant, the Brownell Trustee Chair, is joining us.
Hello, I wrote down my thoughts, so I'm gonna be reading from my phone. Um. Some of this will be a, a repetition, but I'll try to keep that short. I'll try to notice that before I say it. Okay. The variety, the, the library continues to be very busy and the variety of people using the library and the wide range of requests for help programs and services, I really see as a reflection of what's going on the, in the community and the country as it's the front lines of society, really. And, and everything is free and open to the public, to everybody. Um, we as trustees do have concern, a lot of concern about the finals, uh, the financial stability of the library in the current political climate with everything. Um, particularly the IMLS, uh, the dismantling. We don't know how that's gonna affect us yet. Uh, as Ben Wendy was saying, we've um hired uh several subs this year that have been subsequently left because they can get paid more in other places. Um, we've also hired several, well, two key positions at the library. Um, the library technical assistant who processes youth materials and plans adult programs. And also the library assistant for youth and young adult services who coordinates programs for teens and tweens and also um is instrumental in making the summer reading program work. And again, the pay is low for the level of skill required to be a sub or to stay in the more entry-level permanent positions. And we do routinely lose people because of that. Um, because of the level of skill that people need to work in libraries and provide good services is, is high. We've had some hi- very highly attended programs this year, um, from walking trips to the police and fire stations. A program about birds of prey from Vermont Institute of Natural Sciences, BINS. And they bring in owls and a falcon, that was very cool. Um, and there was a, a visit of, of, of maybe how many sled dogs, Wendy? A bunch of sled dogs one day, we had about fifty attendees. Um, we also host vision screening programs through the Lions Club and community volunteers um work individually with community members to help them with their taxes. And then we have a bunch of other programs as well, but those are some of the high points, in my opinion. Uh, this year, the youth department added a Winnie Bell Maker Space, which offers opportunities for youth and families to explore STEM concepts and get um creative anytime they come to the library. And this station was funded by the Winnie Bell Learned Fund. And it's one of the ways that the library offers passive programming. Some examples of other passive programs are our craft kits, which we offer first come, first served monthly and are always hugely popular, they always go, all of them. And we have a community um puzzle, he, people can come in and just hang out in the main reading room and work on a puzzle. We've had a loom that people can work on, um, things like that. And in July twenty twenty four, a new law went into effect that I think most of you are familiar with. It's S two twenty or Act one fifty. And that created new privacy protections for youth age twelve to eighteen. It used to be sixteen, correct, Wendy? But now um children who are twelve, uh, was, who are twelve and up can elect to not have their, uh, what they check out uh, uh, available to their parents or guardians still get. So this was a huge uh change. Um, the staff had to rework the registration process, had to talk to every child who came in, who was in that age group, often talking to the parents who needed to understand what was happening. Who was in that age group, often talking to the parents who needed to understand what was happening. And, uh, let's see. So, so the staff had to talk to the stu, the kids, the parents about the law. And also talk to the kids about their responsibilities with books now. Or any of the library materials that they take out because the parents might not be involved anymore on it. The libraries hosted a lot of groups and meetings in the Culver Room, which is fun to see that so busy. Um, but this during the renovation. But it's also necessitated another level of service from the librarians to help groups with technology. And also reminding groups to close windows, lock doors and keep a record of the room's use. Um, the increased use of this room has also resulted in the library limiting their after school program for school aged children. So getting back to the library sustainability plan, just to add a little bit to that. So it has a lot of layers and it encompasses environmental stewardship, social equity and economic feasibility. Energy efficiency, waste reduction, uh, promoting digital resources and community engagement. One of the ways we're, we're, we're working toward a sustainability plan in addition to the. And the, all the things that Wendy talked about is, uh, we host a lot of swaps, which are fairly new and super popular. Like we have a Halloween costume swap, toy swaps, um, seed and sewing swaps, coupon swaps. Uh, so they've been very popular and so, and they not only support throwing out less, but saving people money as well as building community. Since September, we've had three openings on the trustee board. Two were people who had been permanent members and we were lucky to recruit two community members who have worked with us on. Um, on strategic plans currently and in the past. And the third position is an elected position and we're looking forward to this person joining us after the election on April eighth. And our board is made up of people who are passionate about literacy and information access. And we strive to have trustees to come from as many age groups, genders, lived experiences, skill sets and perspectives as possible. We had a productive and satisfying process developing a memorandum of understanding with the city council, city manager. And two members of the Brownout Trustees that helped clarify each entity's roles and responsibilities. Um, we are at the end of our five year strategic plan process and we are thrilled with the robust responses to a survey we developed. Gauge how well we are doing as a library, meeting the needs of the community and what needs, uh, we could further meet. We complete a strategic plan and process every five years. And for the first time this year, we had the survey available in English and Nepali. One of our community members who serves on the committee was instrumental in helping us get translation services through AI, AALV. Which is a social services agency that supports refugees living in Vermont. And, uh, some of the comments, we had so many positive comments, which was so heartwarming. A lot of you guys are great, keep doing what you're doing, don't change a thing. As well as suggestions such as more comfy seats in the kids section, less wait time for digital books. We're looking at how to respond to new ideas and initiatives within the bounds of, of staffing and budgets. The library director, assistant library director and children's librarian were all fully involved in the process. And the rest of the staff helped with suggestions for survey questions and distributing the survey to as many patrons as they could. And finally, we have an exceptional staff. Uh, they're experts in books, technology and information access. They always strive to learn, create relevant programs and enhance literacy and information access. They're constantly looking for grant opportunities and the best digital services, tech materials and print materials for the best price. Now, this takes a lot of skill and time. And the things as, to piggyback on what, um, Wendy was saying, just the things that librarians are asked to do these days. And the challenges they face such as low wages, uncertain federal and state funding, local funding issues, patrons who are in tenuous life situations. And safety are not what we used to think of as the things that librarians deal with, but that is what they deal with today. And, um, my hope is that. The community, um, the city council, city administration, we can continue to learn more about what goes on in the library. And appreciate what an outstanding library we have. And support the librarians and the library by visiting, talking to the staff and patrons and providing the library the financial support it needs. To continue to be the community asset it is. The end.
Thank you for that, that was very complete. Any questions from council for Jean?
I do, I do have one, I just want to share Jean, um, because I, I continue to hear from residents that they still would like to see. At some point us return to some Saturday hours in the summer.
Yep. Thank you for that.
For working with us on that MOU and continuing to, uh, provide a great library here at this community, so thank you. On the ankle is.
Uh, thank you, it's good, coming along well. I just can't do anything and it drives me crazy, but I really like to read and that's really good.
Glad to hear that.
Yes, thank you, Tim.
Jean and Wendy both for the comprehensive reporting and, um, for doing the work that you're doing. Our library is well regarded throughout Vermont and it's because of your hard work, so thank you.
Thanks, Elaine.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing some of the results from the survey. Um, and maybe some early ideas, like if you have any, it'd be a great way to stay involved with you all, you know, to kind of. You start doing some draft compilations, just send us some themes, just keep us, keep us in the loop. You know, like as you're learning things, because these things take a long time to kind of analyze, right? So, but it'd be interesting to hear from you all, just a. Brief note about some of the highlights of what you've learned, you know, this round, um, as you're working through it. You mentioned, you know, some serious financial, um, some troubling political and financial landscapes coming. Um, we're probably dealing with that across the board in our community. I know several employees that are the federal government that are no longer employed, that live in our community. A lot of what we heard tonight. Will be reflected in what this council hears throughout the year, especially next fall, when they start talking about the budgets again. So it's going to be interesting to kind of figure out how a lot of these things are addressed and what is likely to be with fewer resources. So, um, I guess I'd say as I depart, um, you know, Brownell is a gem, not just for our community, but for the state. And it's been a wonderful resource for our family and for this community. And I'm consistently troubled by what I hear, some of the struggles are there for staff. Going back to what Wendy mentioned about staff concerns around our employees who, who are worried about their own. How they're going to be treated in this new landscape for their own identity. That is. Something I think about all the time, I think we're all very concerned about that. So please convey that, that is, it's on my mind as well, I do, I do think about that, um, so that. But yeah, I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be a difficult year or two. Um, so maybe more communication back and forth. Um, than we're normally used to, might be a good thing, um, in terms of, especially as you learn more about the results from the survey. I think it'd be interesting to try to figure out, um, because yeah, I, I would, I would absolutely expect. It's gonna be difficult next fall, having these conversations again.
Yeah.
But, um, but I. Overall, I don't, I mean, it sounds like there's been a lot of negative tonight, I'll just stop talking, but I think the. We, we can sort of have that conversation because we know that at its base and at, at the bones, the library is a fantastic resource for the community. And it's just, I think, the best library in the state, so thank you for that. Really appreciate the work.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And thank you for your time on this, the council and the village trustees and I wish you enjoying your free time.
I'll be at the library.
Okay.
Not too close to, to Lincoln, but you know, close enough. Nothing else from council, thank you very much, Jean, we appreciate it, thanks Wendy.
Thank you.
All right, um. I'm on the page, I don't know what agenda I was five D, discussion and consideration of renewal of the city manager contract. I lost the page. Thank you. So we, we've talked about this, yeah, so we talked about this last meeting. We didn't actually make a motion and vote on the contract, I think is the question in front of us, is that right Regina? Okay. So we can probably make this quick.
So I move that the city council renewed the employment agreement for the city manager with Regina Mahoney. As negotiated through September fourteenth, twenty twenty seven.
I'll second, oh, go ahead. All right, was that Elaine?
Yes, yeah.
Awesome, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, once again, thanks Regina.
You. Circle back twice.
No, it's all right. We'll just keep doing it. All right, um, that's it for business, um, I'll move, we approve the consent agenda. Great, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously, council member comments and city manager report, sorry, it's hard to talk.
Persevering Raj. Just first thing on my, uh, note is just to, um, make sure everybody's aware, consent item six C. The municipal planning grant application, we need everybody's signatures on this semi complicated form by Friday at the latest. So we will get that sent out, um, through Adobe signature tomorrow, if everybody can keep an eye out for it. Just a note that we are, um, monitoring with cameras this week, uh, how the lights are functioning at five corners. Um, and doing some data collection there so we can continue to sort of tweak and make sure, um, those lights are working and functioning as best they can. Certainly have heard a lot about the length, um, short length of the left hand turn from Pearl Street to Lincoln or Maine. So, uh, definitely taking a look at that. Also, according to the latest schedule, it looks like the reappraisal letters will start going out to the city properties in May. Um, so we'll have a bit more information on that in April, um, as, uh, as that gets on your way. And that's it.
Great. Marcus.
Um, I did want to just mention, because I think it's, it's an important part of our process, um, and having become the city. Uh, the governance committee is meeting in its first meeting tomorrow night. Um, that meeting will be held at seventy five Maple Street EJRP. Um, there is a remote link in the agenda, which you can find online at Essex Junction dot org. This will be an organizational meeting, this will kind of set the stage, this, you know, we're not going to be deep into the discussion at this point. But, um, again, I just wanted to make sure that the community knew that this was getting going tomorrow and that. Because it, it, it is the, an important, and I think the last step. I think in the whole process of really confirming and solidifying the city of Essex Junction, so, anyway, thank you.
Great, thanks. Anyone else? Just a quick thank you to Public Works for a quick response to the water main break in countryside. Seem to be a rite of spring. But that's sadly, um, that's all I have. So Amber, you want to move, we adjourn, it's your favorite part.
A move that we adjourned.
I'll second. All right, Marcus can have that one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thanks all.
Thank you.